Are you putting me in the hot seat?
I guess man, head of the table where you always wanted to be.
Now, what does that mean?
Hey, we'll give you a little extra time if you'll still give us an update on what?
On what?
Woody, your husband, that guy.
Let me think about that.
How's he doing?
He's, you know, it is what it is. But thank you for asking.
Is he in decent spirits?
No, no. No, he's never grumpy. He's just depressed. You know, it's, he, he's, understands enough of everything to know that he should be depressed. So he's depressed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard. It's just, but this is, you've been through this. You've been through this, Mike. I don't know about the rest of you. Jen, I know you have. It's just the way it is. And you're going through with Jennifer's mother's father.
Right now, mother.
Mother.
And her dad's on the way to that, actually.
It is a mess if you've got two.
So, uh, tell us your name. Why are you interested in serving? So, library.
Well, I called Jen at two, three things. Uh, library, P and Z, and buildings and standards. And I should, there's a postscript if I didn't put it on the paperwork. Um, anywhere you need me. I mean, it doesn't have to be something that I, I say I'm interested in. Just anywhere you need to put somebody I'm interested in.
You know, we're, we're, we only have like four or something.
You know, Jen has said that wonderful.
Yeah, it is, it is very nice. Few vacancies and we had maybe fifteen, so much, so we ended up calling. Uh, we just didn't, nobody got to interview us. So, we know that your passion is library.
Well, I'm just as passionate about P and Z.
Okay.
I'm really just as passionate about anything related to planning for the future of the city. Library is a personal passion.
Yeah.
Um, P and Z is a professional mental passion.
Yeah.
Um, buildings and standards, I believe in completely. It's very important. Actually, every one of our, I know we don't have anybody now. But I'm perfectly willing for you to put me on a waitlist right anywhere or just stick my name in the slide to say, if you decide you want to do something interim because somebody resigns or needs you need, just call me.
Okay, okay.
That's easy. That's sure nice. You're one of the few people that, you know, that you can trust to do the job the way.
Well, I will do, well, we hope, we hope that it will be the way that fits in. You know, I don't, I don't say that I won't bring personal agenda. You know what I want for the library? Give us ten million dollars and we'd be satisfied.
That's what they all say.
Yeah. And I should not mention money. You should all have been through the wringer and back about money, so.
That, that's why Susan wanted, wanted to get off here.
No, I had not known what was coming. And I, and I also didn't want to get off.
Carl, I said, Carl, everything was great for you guys.
Yeah, Carl, don't listen to coin word. They, they make jokes all the time and it's not true.
Timing, timing, that's right.
Timing is everything.
Yeah. Um, we don't, you know, we have these questions and we don't need to ask those. We don't need.
Ask me any questions. That's fine.
Well, we'll slot you. We'll, we'll, hopefully we'll find the place.
Okay, I will give you a couple of comments that I, notes that I made.
All right.
In terms of all the boards, but with my experience as council member representing library, animal services and parks, I would like to see the members of the boards and commissions more involved rather than just getting, um, a report and saying, that's nice. Bye-bye. It was a good hour.
How would you suggest they do that?
I'm not sure because then you get into policy issue. But some kind of more involvement, um, I don't know if that means more meetings, more, more development meetings with the director of each of the departments. I don't know. I know when I was on P and Z back a hundred years ago, we did not have the workshop. I know that the workshop exists now and I understand that the workshop is, is involved, but not as involved as the council workshop is. Perhaps more workshop time that has more communication, more give and take, more sense that the, that the boards and commissions are putting, giving input. I don't know.
When I got on P and Z, they gave me two really large notebooks. Just that, read this.
Well, she's your first meeting, probably.
Yeah.
Well, and I mean involvement about the issues they're going to be looking at to vote on. How that relates to other parts of the city, how it relates to the future development of the city or lack of future development or infrastructure development. I know Brian tells everybody those things, but do the, the individuals communicate and discuss it? Do they understand it? I don't know.
You guys on P and Z, they did, ever did as much of a workshop on those issues as they do for council now.
Good.
Didn't you go to Dallas to do a?
I went every year to, when Tim Dolan was here, we started every year. We went to the, or we had the opportunity to go to the APA, the Texas APA conference. And I think everybody ought to go to at least one of those to be on.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And it's not bad for ZDA and some of those other things too. Cause you learn laws, you learn good practices and good city planning.
Do you feel like, I, I know during the neighborhood revitalization meeting, um, they are very detailed and, um, they're really going over every neighborhood that we're working on and either the details of the traffic, the signage, the land, all that stuff. But, uh, did they do that like in the library?
No.
They, do they, any chance to pour the facilities to discuss?
No, there's been very, and I, I don't, I'm certainly not blaming Madwick. And Elizabeth is a new kettle of fish and, and I think she's going to be great. I just very, very little involvement with libraries or report and everybody says thank you and leaves.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think it is, they're willing, they're willing to do more.
Is there anything, you talked about a report. Is there anything that the advisory board has to vote on?
No, they just make comments and endorse.
Yeah.
In, in the years that I represented the library, the council on the library, um, at the library meetings, library doesn't meet every month as, as some do.
Yeah.
Um, it's just an endorsement really, and there's almost no feedback. I think Elizabeth will be much more open to doing that, but that's a guess. I don't know that. And I wondered if, if it would be maybe a good idea or a possible idea to have the department heads or X, Y, Z, uh, boarding commission part of this interview process. Not the decision making, making, be here, interact with you and then you all decide.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's just a thought.
We definitely vet them out through.
Yeah, that's one thing has changed.
After the airport or yes, good.
And we make a nomination. Now we go back to that department head before it's approved. You made that call, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
But if the department head was sitting here and see, saw each applicant, I don't know, it might be.
We have had that asked by several department heads.
Okay.
That'd be good.
And I completely agree with you, Susan. On some parks, there, there's several of those boards. You sit there and you get a report from the golf, you get a report from this and that and okay, thank you for the information. Thank you for lunch.
Lunch, thank you for lunch on parks. Nobody else gets one day.
But they just go, just going to pick on ESAB or parks because they're probably the two ones where they just go and get an update. Those are the ones that have a tendency to have their most constant wrong amount because they, they don't stay engaged.
Yeah, well, that's not why.
But the police, the CPAC, the police one, every month chief calls in somebody to show like we've seen the drones. We've seen the little body bags they put. I mean, it's something that is interesting at least.
Well, and it, and it expands the knowledge of the person on the, on the board and commission who theoretically is sharing that within the communities that they represent. Um, it's just a thought.
You know, on that issue, to me it kind of gets back to, I have no experience in the city, not much for the city. It's been years since I was on the old Capitol Hill planning committee. But, um, to me it's kind of incumbent on whoever is leading the group to get input and not just give a report. Uh, but to get input and say, okay, we're considering changing this policy. What do you think about it? And by the way, do we want to vote? And it's not binding, but you know, the, whoever is, you know, librarian or parks or whatever knows that, hey, this is how the citizens feel.
No, I agree. I think that would, on one level, require the boards and commissions to meet more frequently with the department head to talk about things that are coming up. As of now, at least with the library and with parks, the people just appear, hear the report of what happened in the past quarter or the past month or whatever the time period is and thank you, goodbye.
I know when I was in the bank here, we, our board record shifted to an advisory board. They got where we were just giving them a report and we got no value out of them. And I don't think anybody got much value out of it. But I have been on finance council for the Catholic advisors of Austin, same role for St. Luke's and St. Mary's. And, you know, I see the difference. They, they say, okay, we're talking about doing this. What do y'all think? And at the end of the day, the bishop or the priest or whoever's in charge can make the decision. But generally they take it very seriously what that advisory group is recommending.
Yeah, uh, uh, that's exactly the kind of ideas. But then it would require again, these, these commissions and group and, um, boards to have, they're not coming to the meeting just to look at what's on that agenda. Um, they're looking at what's coming down the road and options may, may connect. I'll make just one more comment that I had written down, um, that I would like to plead for, which is, I really would like to go on P and Z. It's a point if not now. I'm sure that you have problems or potential problems with two past council members on P and Z, but I think it's very, very important to get none, any kind of business people doing anything onto P and Z. Um, P and Z like council is really under the scrutiny right now. As, um, you all know this, I just think that people that, that, the only thing that a non of any business type person could, could get out of anything is somebody paying them under the table to be on P and Z. And I think that it's really important to think about. I'd really like to be on P and Z. I have time to do at least two.
Yeah. Anything else for Susan?
Thank you for being here.
Happy to be here. I was very pleased that, I miss all of you terribly. I was very pleased when Jen and Tommy were meeting down here for dinner. Then Tim, Tim would be happy because I wouldn't cry. If I was upstairs, I'd cry because it would be, it would be too memorable.
The roof might fall on your head.
Well, that might be a blessing to me.
Did they at least keep your badge active or did they, do you even get in and wander around?
No, no, no. I, I, did you not turn it in?
He's been using it.
I'm not using it. It's like Susan appeared in that.
Janet, did he turn it in?
Yes.
I'm sure he did.
Jen didn't know him.
Okay, it's great to see all of you.
Good to see you, Susan.
Jason, he had something for me to sign from Sitcock, so I'm, I set up the time to be. Brother, he drove to Belton. Great. Good to see all of you. Thank you for everything. I am so sorry. You have been through the wringer with, um, budget.
That's okay.
Brushing trash. You've been through the wringer.
That's our job.
The other end of it.
See you all. Have a good day.
Bye, Susan.
Carl, thank you again. And don't take any go from them because it's not true.
Good to see her. Yeah.
Me?
Yep. Susan's the lead. That is her name. I don't know that the. Did she run for office? I mean, the neighbor's office for me. I don't know. I don't know. Not at all familiar. Come in, come in. How are you?
What are you calling you?
Dude, we're putting you on the hot seat there.
The need on Jessica, especially if you two.
I'm Tim Davis. And Carl, fifty dollars.
Yeah, okay. So Carl is your council member, correct?
Well, so thank you for being here. We were all, um, just coming out of town. This is my name. Well, dang, it's tough playing it up. This is my name, so thank you. Nice to put a face with the name. So we, uh, we really have just four quick questions and really once you start answering them, once you start talking, you kind of answer all of them. So first off, tell us a little bit about yourself and tell us why you're interested in serving. And we have you down as your preference is the library board, but you're willing to serve.
Yeah, I think I said library board, park board, and there was another one.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Uh, development standards, library advisory, parks and rent. Yeah. Fire away.
Sure. So, um, I am recently retired the last four years. So prior to that, I worked for the city of Dallas for 20 years. And then I worked Arlington and before that Houston. So I've done more than 30 years as a professional planner. So I have worked with, um, all sorts of boards, ad hoc committees, working on neighborhood plans. I've worked with historic preservation, zoning, zoning board of adjustment, planning commission, worked with council, council committees, all the committees of all of those. So as a professional, I understand the importance of committees and commissions and how they are the backbone of the city and their importance throughout. So when I got settled here, I was thinking, you know, I need to do something with my time. So I started volunteering with Meals on Wheels and, um, taking some classes at UT Austin and still had some time and saw the article and thought, oh, well, maybe that's a way to give back since I benefited all those years from commissions and committees and different things that maybe I can give back since this is now my home and that's why. And then why I picked the parks and library and the other one is, um, I love the library. So my very first library card was when I was five years old at the old, uh, city library in the old, uh, post office. So my mom used to take us to the library and so I still have a library card and I have two others.
Now, when you went downstairs.
Yes, I loved it. I had my book bag.
Yeah.
So we went down, we got books. And so I still, I have three library cards right now. So I love libraries.
A gentleman at our last meeting saying, nobody goes to the library. There's no reason for y'all to get money.
They call it irrelevant. Irrelevant.
Love libraries.
I know.
Yeah, you just have to figure out.
You get Santa's heart right here.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, and I do, um, you know, I do audio books. I do audio, you know, I listen to books on tape. So, and I, I love filling a book in my name. So, and I think the library can make, you know, meet the needs of a lot of different people. They'll just have to get word out. And this library does a good job of doing a lot of different things.
So you're a Temple native?
Um, I, um, in Mashley. Close. I grew up in Belton, so that's where I graduated.
Okay, okay.
No tigers, I know. Yes.
So that's how you ended up back in here. You still have family there? Okay, yeah.
She lives in your district. Yep, over by the historic district. So she lives over there for forty plus years.
Yeah, I'm over on 13th and Historic.
Okay, she's on 15th, um, in Garfield.
Yeah, just right on the street.
Yeah.
Loco.
Yeah, so I go there every day.
Yeah, very good. What else? Counseling thing for Miss Dean? I was not expecting that whenever you came in. Are you highly qualified tenure?
Anywhere.
So you were a plan?
Yes, uh-huh. I was the assistant director in, uh, Dallas when I was in.
Yeah, I noticed you didn't put P and Z down.
I mean, it requires a lot of time.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. So you're amongst all Dallas, Houston of all work, you're now retired. You got your time in and here you are.
The city of Dallas is paying me every month. It's nice.
Yeah, that is nice. That's very good.
Yep. And I go to Sammons all the time. So I go there at least three times a week. So love Sammons.
Are you swimming?
No, I do the exercise classes in Milwaukee. We were out at Crossroads today. So we're actually over, no, we're over. We really like Sammons.
I know. We just had a meeting about, uh, facilities meeting and it's just more than we really want.
It's, it's very.
Um, but there's so many folks that love and miss that.
Yeah, we're lucky. We have Dover, you know, to take that place.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
And you just have your walking in Crossroads?
Uh, yeah, we have a walking every Tuesday. The, uh, Sammons group goes out and walks all the different trails. So we go alphabetically. So we were at Crossroads today.
What's next?
Uh, the other half of Crossroads. So we do, then we do the other half. And then I go back to Austin for six weeks. So then I'll miss walking.
Through your classes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's your lifelong.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
That's great. What's your classes? Are you taking at UT?
It's a, a lifelong learning class. And so each six weeks we have three different sessions. So, um, one of the sessions we have this coming up is jazz. Um, and so a professor at UT in the music, um, group comes and he teaches us for an hour and a half. So last year he taught us about opera. And so this year he's teaching about, um, jazz. And then we have different, um, some judges come and tell us, talk to us, different people. They just get a lot of different people who come and talk to a bunch of retired people.
Isn't that wonderful? I'd agree on that.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
That's great. That's great. This is, this is a strange board and commissions time in that we have lots of applicants, very few applicants. So if we were not able to slot you this time around, would you be willing to leave your application on record?
Oh, certainly. Yes.
Yeah, because we're just, we're just super crowded.
Yeah, it's strange.
It is. It's, it's, normally, it seems like normally you have more.
Normally we're like calling people to come interview.
Yeah.
So this is a good, like good.
It's a good place for y'all to be.
Yeah, it's not, it's not typical. No, for years we didn't interview. I don't know how they maybe did it in the places you came from. But we did an interview. We would just sort of sit around and say, oh, we'll stick her on this, put her on this. It was not a thing.
Yeah.
So I don't know. Three years ago, two or three years ago, we started interviewing and stuff. I think, I think we're, we're putting people in the right spots, what they really want, after we try to get them on. So it's, this has been a good process.
You're good. So. Yeah, in Arlington they interviewed. In Dallas it was we interviewed.
Yeah, and we did a little bit of that too before. Yes, that would like to do it, right?
That wasn't even really effective though. Putting people on the library board that were not interested.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
But do not put, we'll serve her anymore. Okay, well, very good. Well, it was a pleasure to meet you.
Yes, listening out with y'all. Thank you so much for your time.
You bet. Thank you, Christine.
Go-bye.
Pleasure.
At least put down boards that I had been on and also wanted to be on and not just.
Oh, yeah.
You helped her.
Yeah. Oh, that's why. There's already people out there.
You never heard of them.
Yeah. So, I mean, that, that, I wish we could. Yeah, I don't, I mean, she, that, that was fantastic. She probably teach a thing to someone's boards and provisions. Why? You know, that's, to take advantage of somebody like that, it needs back to what we were talking about with Susan. These boards need to be stimulating.
Really, use that advisory board. Use them as opposed to just giving them a lively, it's a waste.
I don't know the whole answer.
Mike has been really struggling with that with, um, which one, Mike, the developments one, ESAB?
Oh, no, the ESAB is great now that they're meeting. They're, I was pushing for them to just have a freaking meeting, but I'm struggling with, well, that way. But I struggle with, I'm always on the Parks Town. I've been on there and yes, the, the fire one.
Yeah.
It's interesting. You go here, lots of stuff. And Laurel was on ESAB, well, when they were together. And she didn't want me reappointed. She's, I don't have time to come up here and just hear what they did.
That's going to take some commitment on the.
On the rack.
Or yes, they're going to have to, like Sean, right? Calling somebody in, doing drones, doing something. You're going to have to do something.
And Sean does, Sean does. I was like, he, he hears, you know, here's something that's happening in my neighborhood from the people and he actually looks into things and he uses that board for his kind of eyes and ears in the community. And he does it.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Is Joey up?
Something about that dance class. I've had a, I lived in college, it's pop music in America and everybody else, you had to have that. You did a class. Everybody always takes it.
You have another Kelly, you've lost your.
I'm Joey. Good to meet you.
Joey and Carl.
Good to meet you, Carl. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
All right. You know the real.
I don't know. This is the first time I've had to do this. I've been on these boards so long. Yeah, dude, y'all weren't doing this.
Talking about that. I think it's been three years.
It's been, y'all, y'all interviewed him the first time.
We adopted our policy. Oh, wow. Okay.
P and Z and parks. Now, what all have you been on?
Okay, so right now I'm the chair of the Parks Board and I'm the chair of the Development Standards. So I serve on two boards. And if I remember correctly, you can only serve on two boards. So I mean, if I intend on getting P and Z, which I'm happy to do so, if you guys see fit, um, then I would need to drop one of the others. And it's been expressed to me by certain people that, that prefer me drop Parks and Rec. That they're probably in a, a better place to be led by someone else. If they're probably in a better place to be led by someone else.
You're on your final term on both boards.
Right.
So you're.
Meaning he's turning out as of ten one?
No, as of in twenty twenty six. So you still have a year left on each, but this is your prime time.
Okay, and I've seen you in action in both and you're doing great. D S A B is doing so much right now. I, I like you there.
Yeah, but. And I understand. And there's some really good people on that board and we're. Um, I was kind of good. I'm hoping to implement some things since I'm sitting in the chair seat. I think it, it opens up the ability to try to implement some things. Just to let you all know, I think. The way that that board has worked in the past is that the city sees problems that they have with certain aspects. And they bring it to the board and go, we want to change this. And it's tough for a board to take something on that they delve into one side. And so we created a subcommittee of some outside agencies as well as the city to say, let's, let's look at all angles before we bring it to the board.
Okay.
And let's just kind of, you know.
I think that's.
Break, break it all down. So really and truly, to me, the subcommittee is as important as the board itself.
How big is it?
It's pretty large. A- as far as regular members, I would say that there's probably about eight.
Damn.
But at each meeting, we've had up to fifteen people coming.
I've been doing developer functions. Because. Construct, well.
Yeah.
It's honestly more engineers than, than streets and utilities.
Yeah.
Is ninety percent.
Yeah.
And, and I've attended, I'm not on the subcommittee, but I've attended just to kind of see the pathway, go and see if it's something that works or if it's just a lot of back and forth.
Correct.
They've come a long way so far. It took a minute. It took, the first meeting was kind of like. A lot of back and forth. Now, now they're kind of getting in their groove. And so my, my recommendation will be that we adopt. The subcommittee meeting on a regular basis before to vet all things that come to the board.
Yeah.
So that we get.
Also ensure more efficient work.
Yeah, well, that's, I can't. Me personally, I don't want to call a board meeting during a lunch hour and it'd be two and a half hours long. And that's what, you know, for us as a board to dive into every little aspect. Yeah, it would take forever.
I've had really, really hard luck still with these, but.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm happy to shut them down.
Right, you're the board chair. Do what you want. Okay, so um. Do you want, is your desire to be off one of these? Or would you be happy to sit tight?
Um, no, I, I think it's time. I mean, I've served. Um, very faithfully on the Parks and Rec. I've not once ever missed a meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, they would probably tell you, we, we would hate to lose you. But. Like you said, I'm, I'm almost off and I feel okay about setting that aside and moving on to the P and Z. Um, I think they're in a good position right now. And I think they have some folks that have been on for, for a while that can really kind of take those reins and lead.
It's a fairly large board.
It is. It is. There's, there's uh seven board members on that.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of people in the room because there's a lot of staff sub.
I think I know you pretty much directly, so some of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, um. Well, I have, uh, I've lived in Temple since my wife and I got married twenty eight years ago. And I grew up, uh, we moved to Belton when I was twenty months old. And then we moved back to Salado and went to high school and graduated from Salado, went to M H P for a couple of years, met my wife. And decided love was way more important than education. Plus, I was higher school. I'm a working man, you know. So, um, for the last twenty six years, I worked for A C T. I was the engineer for the Temple area, surrounding areas for almost a decade. And so got to know a lot of the inner workings and got very involved with the city so that, you know, we could make really good decisions together. And in doing so, it turned into me having a desire to run for city council and I learned a lot. Um, Mike and I ran against each other years ago and. As he tells it, uh, it's amazing that we can run against each other and then turn around and be friends, and we are.
We should be.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Right, and friends out here while we were all there.
Exactly.
Don't vote for this manager.
So it's, it's one of those things where my heart truly is for the service of our community. Uh, it not just, and, and. I think people get it wrong when they say, I'm, I do this for the citizens. I think this is an entire working system that has to work together.
Yeah.
And there's so many different pieces that have to come together. And this piece doesn't always know what this piece is doing. And so we have to trust the leaders that we put in place to do that. And so I've decided that, you know, for me, I'm, I'm okay being someone that can follow, but I'm also someone that can lead. And so I've worked um with these boards for quite some time to grow in my experience. Um, as well as I have been on my HOA board for Windmill Farms, which is out in West Temple. We have six hundred and fifty one homes. I've been the president of that board now for probably twenty sixteen. Uh, and we, we run pretty efficiently. And um, you know, I, I grew up in church. Um, I've led worship in church for. Gosh, twenty five years, had a Christian band for eighteen years. It went all around the area. And now I have an eighties band. I retired from the church side. And now I have an eighties pop band.
They're the best. They're so good, yeah.
We, we, we have fun. So, um, yeah, I mean, as a whole, my wife and I, my wife was born in Scottsdale. She's never, not lived in Temple and we raised all five of our kids here and. So we just, we love this area and we wanna, we want what's best for it. And we understand it's such a growth driven area that. You need good people willing to make hard decisions sometimes in a place to take the brunt of what happened. And. I have strong shoulders and a strong back. And so I'm, I'm willing to do those things and, and I'm willing to, to be a part of. Um, you know, the goals, uh, not, not the driver behind it all, but know that it's a whole system that needs to work together and, and work for each other. So.
How's Danny?
Danny's doing really good. Danny's my youngest son. He's got a brain tumor. He's seventeen now, senior year at Lake Belton. And uh, no, no changes. Um, he's, all of his medication has been working great for him. He's as healthy as, matter of fact, he gets up every morning at like four in the morning, goes to the gym on his own.
Wow, it's great.
Man, amazing. Sorry. Yeah. And he started going, we've been going to church out of town. Because I've done so much around here that when I walk in the doors of church, they're like, hey, we need you to do this. And so we've been, I hate to use the word disappeared for a while. But in the church setting, I needed a chance to just breathe. And so we've been going to celebration church and. He came to us and said, I, I'm gonna start looking for churches around here because I want to be a part of a youth group. I want to finish high school with my, you know, my peers and. You know, be able to be a part of that. And we said, that's a great plan. We'll start visiting churches with you just to make sure you, you know yourself. So we visit a few churches. Um, we, we haven't made any decisions yet, but you know, we're, we're very, we're, we're active in our um. Following of Christ. And that's the number one thing for me and my family is that we, we want to be Christ driven. And if people have a problem with that, that's okay. It's America. You, you can have a problem, but I, I, I want to say that, so.
Joey, you talk about your family. Are you related to Bob A G?
I am not. Uh, Bob A G moved to Salado, uh, long after we did, uh, and lived in Mill Creek and, and passed away. We are not related. We actually went and asked him, where, where's your family?
Yeah.
Nope, no relation at all. We, it's, it's a, it's strange to have that, that name. It's not a.
It's not a real common name.
That's exactly right.
I knew Bob for years. He was in Arc of Bell for long. It's a fine guy.
Yeah, yeah. I, when I was assistant pro at Mill Creek, um, back when I was twenty, twenty one. Um, he, he had moved out that way. And so I got to, I got to know that, hey, there's a whole nother family of A G's out here. And I get, I get asked all the time. Like, you really? No, no, my dad is this A G. Uh, my parents worked very hard. They, we, we came from very little and they have. Really set an example how to work and how to achieve and, and be the best. And that typically means you're the first one to go and the last one to leave.
Yeah.
You, you gotta learn at every step of the way. So. That's what I try to do.
Anything else for Joey? Oh, it's good to see you, man. Just thank you for working and doing it professionally.
Yes, sir. That's my pleasure. Uh, it's, it's, it's been a great learning experience. I've gotten just as much from. Being on these boards as they have gotten from me, I'm sure. So if not so, more, more from, you know, the staff that we have. And the city's just, they're just really good. They're really good at what they do and.
Tell your friend.
Tell the newspaper and yeah.
Well. Yeah, I, I saw a video of a, of mister. Uh. Blake Bay, yeah, of the council meeting. And I thought, well, I wish I would have had time to be at that one. I, I would have loved to get up and rebut what gives. His talking point.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, we have to take the gives or the bad. And everybody has an opinion. And. Some people are just out to make anything better themselves, whether it's the truth or not. Uh. You guys are put in, you're trusted in this position to make the hard decisions. And you see the big picture. Not any other citizen is to see the entire picture that you get to see. So you steadfast in what you're doing and hold strong. So do what you gotta do.
We know where we're going.
Yeah, and there's plenty of us to back.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Of course.
All right, good to see you, man.
You bet.
Always.
Thank you all.
And that's just a part.
Speaker district because it looks like there's.
Oh. Supposed to be.
We tried to do it, but we made an exception. We amended policy two years ago now that if we have a twelve line for the area, then I'm gonna need to struggle with all that.
We're just leaving the seat open.
Got you.
Billy, Billy gets it. Even as, yeah, I can, you know.
I had a lunch, pretty awful. He understands.
Your speed in it. Back in the hot seat.
There you go. Hello, everybody.
Good to see you.
Last time. I'm sorry.
I was talking.
Cool. Thank, and thank you all for seeing me again.
Yeah, yeah. So P and Z only.
Hey. What are you saying?
Goodbye.
Hey. No, it, it is, I, like I said last time, it is probably one of the most important commissions uh every city has. Uh, Houston needs one. Yeah, and um, I feel like, yeah, P and Z is my passion.
I didn't even remember you were.
Uh, Ronald McDonald House.
That's it, that's it. I knew there was a city connection somewhere.
Yep, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, Shannon.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but yeah, she was the one that told me. I think you mispronounced her. And I was like. But, uh, yeah, no, I'm passionate about P and Z. Uh, I know it's important. I've seen what it, you know, like I said last time, I've seen what. It looks like when a city uh doesn't have uh zoning uh regulations. So. Uh, the distribution center that got built by our neighborhood and eighteen wheelers coming through and bringing all this traffic in a. Uh, residential area is really problematic. So, uh, city has a, a master plan and P and Z uh helps facilitate that. So. You can't, you want to plan your development in a manner that will. There's always gonna be issues later on, but you can mitigate those if it's planned and you're doing this properly. So, sorry.
Uh, anything, um, Sturgis?
I'm sorry?
I was just asking, okay, how you stood it, questions?
Well, I don't know. We, we've had visits before, so it's wonderful. We have a chance to do.
It, it's great to see y'all too.
So Sturgis, we are stupid hat this year on um openings. Would you, last time, was it a year ago you answered before P and Z only?
Uh, it was, well, I, I interviewed for, for both, for P and Z and then Z.
P and Z is normally just, just in the spring, right?
Yeah, he's an alternate on C P A.
Right. Well, I haven't been uh lately, so.
Cause I thought it was, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And uh, that's been exciting. And I, I want to say how appreciative I am for y'all, um, putting trust in, and. I know to, to, from y'all and me, I'm kind of an unknown. And y'all have to do y'all's best to vet folks and uh. May, you know, reduce the chance of y'all having regrets and stuff and having to replace people.
That's happening for.
I, yeah, yeah, I would imagine so.
Well, that's, that's where I was getting at. Um. It might be wise to be willing to sort of broaden your. Uh, the, the things you're willing to serve on, so we do, knowing you want to.
Yeah.
Because there have been a couple of times that mistakes have been made that we had to go back and. And it's just, it's, it's better not to have to do that.
Right.
So that, that would be my only suggestion. Cause P and Z is one of those.
Very high profile.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Every council meeting, we work with something that the P and Z worked on previously.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And uh, there's been some times when uh. I'll say it nicely.
Yeah.
That um. P and Z, few folks caused some wrinkles here and there, which is fun. We want people to vote, you know, their conscience and be educated.
Sure, yeah.
So that's all I'll say.
Yeah.
But um, that, that would be a suggestion I would have. Just be willing to maybe put in some seat time. On other board or two.
Sure.
To build up a little bit of residence. Cause that's a tough one, especially this time when it's super tough because there's, you have a number of applicants that are super qualified.
Sure.
Also. So I'm not saying that you're not getting, I'm saying that there's a, it's hard to build this time around.
You'd be sorry. Yes, no, I, I, I understand that. And I'm. Hope, I don't know if y'all, y'all uh. Talked with uh the folks in planning development, how I have, uh, I feel like I've contributed a lot to in the, the meetings and sessions we've had at C B A. And I think uh the staff there can, can vouch that, wow, okay, he's. Makes every meeting, he's uh present and he's, I'm, I'm uh. Adding questions and so we had at my, the first meeting, you know, there was some easement issues and. I, I'm not trying to brag, but, but I was like, I brought up something that was overlooked.
Okay.
And um, we ended up tabling and waiting for him to update the, the gentleman, the property owner, to update things and come back to us. And then it worked out, so.
Other than the poor experience in Houston. What's your passion behind P and Z?
Um, no, it's, it's, it is the proper uh development and growth. I know we're, right now, we're experiencing growth. Uh, a lot, you know. Um, and I've discussed with uh Dr. Oth at, at Temple I S D and. Uh, we've talked about, uh, had a meeting with him earlier this year, you know, on the upcoming bond and whatnot. And he was walking me through the. Classroom growth and expectations for the next five years. And it's like, okay, yeah. So, um, yeah, and I, I'm, I'm familiar. I. I mean, I was, used to be involved in politics and stuff and running campaigns. I, and uh, that was so. Emotionally and mentally exhausting. And that's not where, where I'm at though. But that experience helped me understand. The inner workings and how city government, state, and federal government work and operate. So, um, I want to be helpful. And I think I can.
Would you connect your dots for me? And when you talk about being involved in politics and then looking at your application, you're a mediator and arbitrator. And you work at Ronald McDonald House.
Yep.
Who kind of put all that together for you?
In what way? Uh, like.
It's disparate interest, it appears.
Okay. Oh, right, okay. Um, so mediation, arbitration, so, okay. Let's start from the, uh, I've been at Ronald McDonald House for almost ten years. Let's start from the, uh, I've been at Ronald McDonald House for almost ten years. In no way did I think that I was going to be, uh, still be here. Um, but the mission, it just, it got me. And uh but in the meantime, my my uh idea was finish up the, finish up school, and then what I did was I went through mediation and arbitration training, and honestly, uh I would recommend uh at least basic mediation training for anyone in in, I would agree, it doesn't matter. Uh, and that has uh given me uh tools that I will uh apply there anywhere. I don't know how many times uh we've had either a employee dispute, or maybe it's more likely, what we've seen more of is maybe a dispute between uh mom and dad. I mean, they got their kid in the hospital, and emotions are high and whatnot, and there's been some some loud arguing and stuff, and so um it was like, oh, okay, I can I can settle this, and I have. And great with uh interpersonal uh dealings, and then my whole plan was actually to leave Ronald McDonald eventually and then actually start my own uh mediation arbitration uh business. Sorry, long.
No, no, that that helps.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah, when I'm with you, I think that the skills you learn in arbitration and mediation, I think you're.
Yeah. And to to add to, just thought of this, but um my training and and uh practice of in mediation and arbitration, I've applied uh some of those practices in uh our updating our personnel policies and uh we have a kind of like a sheet of a rules list for for families and stuff that they sign, and so um, yeah, I I we have arbitration agreements and and whatnot is is legal insulation for us and um, yeah.
None of them go yet.
Yeah.
It's just been kind of cool.
Yeah.
Are you the director at Ronald McDonald House?
No, uh Shannon Gowan is.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but I'm I'm I serve right under, so.
In this manager.
Yes, ma'am.
What else? Anything else for you? You wanna be sure that we know?
Um, yeah, um. I really, I know, I I I I take with your your suggestion to heart. Um, I would ask that you would really consider my current work on ZBA. You can, you can, Dr. Ott, you can vouch with Shannon, y'all, somebody y'all know Shannon really well. Um, and the the current P and Z commission is composed kind of heavily on uh real estate or and that kind of, it leans that way. And I, quite frankly, I don't see somebody, just a regular citizen um on that on that board. Yes, they're all citizens, and they all live a part of the community. But there's a, there's a, there's a little skew to it. And I understand you want folks who are knowledgeable, you know, you've got your neighborhood class and developing, you know, that sort of stuff, that's great, I understand. Do I know the details and all that uh that part? No, I don't, but I've proven in ZBA that I'm a click learner, and that's not an issue.
Right.
And I really think uh this is a great opportunity for y'all uh to include just a regular, I and I I like to say, I'm a regular citizen with above-average understanding of uh city government, so I hope uh it works.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see y'all too. Thank you, uh, y'all registered for our reg gala, I think.
So, and please.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, y'all see you then. Thank you all again. Thanks for my ladies.
I liked your point about just regular citizens.
How are you? Did you wear a hat?
He's a happy guy.
He's a.
Do you know the? Okay.
I don't know that.
I'm Carl Kirkwell.
Uh Doug Smith.
Nice thirty two.
No, it's Smith's.
Dennis is your brother.
Yes.
Okay.
I said that in the rest of the.
I understand. But then you have served on what and for how long? You've been on, I remember coming to your house, Ken, paying the back and beat that up and start cleaning, and you were on the parks board.
So I've been on the parks board more than.
Thirty-eight years.
More than one. And then I was also, I was, I was on the Parks Foundation Board as well.
Okay.
And then I've been on a lot of other stuff that's not a city, but Parks Board's the only thing I've served on, and I was chairman, I think, twice.
Okay.
Two different times.
You're not the new rotary, not city staff, but.
Yeah, I just, yeah, so my term ended last, I I didn't do anything for the last three years because I'm the district governor. Rotary, that was a three-year commitment, basically, for, and I'm finally getting with that. Thank goodness. Yes. So I figured time for me to do something new. If needed.
You know, we have these four questions, definitely, but I know you, right? We always say, uh, tell us a little about yourself, why are you interested in serving, I think we know that, skills and talent, I think you know that. What would you accomplish? You've done it. So we're down to the last one. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I mean, it's like I said, I think lots of, I mean, I'm lived here all my life, own a business here, wherever I'm needed, I'm, I mean, I wanna serve, so.
Guess down for parks, but you're willing to serve anywhere.
And I thought you said P and Z.
I applied for P and Z, but I do. I mean, I would serve anywhere, maybe.
Right.
There might be something I would not be qualified or interested in. I'm gonna be the best person.
Right, no, yeah. We talked about somebody earlier, we used to just to just sort of arbitrarily stick people on board, and we didn't get a lot of traction year after year, just you stick some guy that's on the library on the library board.
Yeah, that's funny you say that, because that's what I was thinking. I saw that the library part, that would not be.
Yeah.
I just don't know that I could have anything. And I like the new director, by the way.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I like the old director.
Natalie?
Yeah. That was awesome.
Yeah.
My name's Elizabeth. She's really nice. She has curly red hair. She was with the museum.
Oh, okay.
She's got a lot of energy.
Yeah, she has. Well, anything else to add? I did see you out there wandering around at two o'clock before I came in.
Okay, so here's the deal. So she, I'm almost positive, I said I couldn't do three o'clock, but I never put it in my phone or anything. So I was like.
That's she.
Cause I have a four o'clock, and so I was like, I can't do three, but anyway, I'm here, we're good.
And you can.
So yes, I came at two. I was so excited to interview you guys, I can't.
It was worth it, right? Waiting an hour?
But since I didn't put it in my phone, I I may have just thought I needed to be at two o'clock, so. So anyway, yeah, whatever you got.
Okay.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
Yeah.
Anything, thanks.
So good.
Oh, the stuff I take to medicine? Oh, yeah, okay.
What makes it so good? What's your, what's your?
Um, actually, it was something that I wanted to do a smoked meatloaf.
Oh.
So I chat GTP'd it.
Okay.
And that was the sauce that came up with that.
Okay.
And this would be a good barbecue sauce.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy. It was vinegar and creamed sugar, mustard, ketchup, probably.
Okay.
It wasn't much.
Yeah.
It was really good.
Good. Sounds great.
The smoked meatloaf was really good. So, all right.
Well, that's it.
Thank you so much.
That was easy.
It was easy.
You're the last guy walked out sweating.
We put in shoes around. We told him, we said, Smith's next, go out whenever you leave. Trimble a little bit, make him cry.
All right, see you.
See you, thanks.
Keep you back on tap. I don't know him, but.
Super guy.
Not anything like his brother.
I don't know. He is a universe. Dennis has been kind of wild for a while, and he is very much calm down.
He was more wild than. Oh, yeah. Dennis is always a little wild, but this. This is.
Yes, no, he.
It's like he probably needs.
Yes, he absolutely.
He probably learned a lot from that stuff, things. Hey, come in.
How are you?
Are you, sir?
Good.
Good. I don't know you. I'm I'm Tim Davis.
I'm Will.
Yeah.
Did you grow up in the whole?
Yes, we do.
Did you go to work?
Uh, brothers to ship with all the all the trams.
Okay, thank you. My son's gone to school with my cousin, Sharon, bro.
Yes.
Okay.
She's just how. All the weeks with her.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's good.
And then my son, Brandon, graduated.
Yes, yeah, I'm in the school too.
Yeah.
Very good.
So I'm just the longest. I've met before, but yes, good to see you guys. I'm so great.
To Carl Kirkwell. All the turtler boys.
All right, let's see here. Brandon.
We're very far, I'm sorry.
No, no.
A western pole.
Okay.
It's over kind of um, let's see, this way, uh, it's far from. Uh, it's just off of Westfield.
Okay.
Is that still District One out there?
No, I think it's.
Westfield, which side of Westfield are you? North, I mean, east or west?
Oh, he's in District One, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you are me.
I think I've seen your name all. All right, so you are interested in parks?
Yes, sir.
And the CPAC. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us why you're interested in serving this.
I'm just, I've been here my whole life, born and raised. Uh, went to high school, grew up, grew up here, worked for the same company for about thirty-three years.
Wow.
So I just, I just want to get more involved. I think there's a couple of guys at work that kind of inspired a lot of us.
Yeah.
To kind of step in more, just to help out and do stuff with the community.
Yeah, it's really nice to be a business that promotes that.
I think what's also helped with us is doing doing our barbecue area here.
Oh, yeah.
That seems to be really a big thing that people look forward to, so it's just getting out, just getting out, just doing something, just helping out.
I've been surprised the people that are willing, in in most of them are this way. They're willing to sit there and take and take and take from the community. They're never really, you know, put a four back in, other than their work.
Right.
You know, so.
Oh, I've, that's, that's kind of how I got involved for a long time, just. Right, but it's just, I don't know, like BJ's helped, I mean, it's just seeing him get out and the more people eat meats and different groups that he's kind of into now and stuff, it's just, that's just making me want to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
What do you bring to the table?
I don't know what kind of table is it.
Barbecue sauce recipe.
Yeah, I know, I know. Also, any options to this five minutes? You're up. So what what skills, talent, or experience do you think you bring?
I don't know, I just think being from Temple, knowing, just watching the community, how it's growing, just I think there's always ways to, something, there's someone always has a better idea.
Yep.
Or maybe a more clear idea of something, and I just think having people that have just been around that long in your community just helps.
Right. Yeah, I got a couple of interviewees that go, kind of said the same thing. How about just regular folks?
Right.
Just in the community, right, and get their input.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we do, I mean, you know, just everybody knows, parent-wise, just, I've got two stepgirls, and one's at Texas State, and the other one's a sophomore in high school, and we're just showing goats and pigs and all kinds of stuff, so it's, I mean, it, work doesn't stop at six o'clock.
Right.
Go home, change clothes, go and go feed.
Right.
Every every day, and then weekends, we're out there probably half the week. So it's just, I don't know, I just feel like it's just a not work, it's not work, it's, to me, it's, that wouldn't be fun being on a board, it would just give, it would give me new insight on just how things work.
I like that.
Say those FAA kids were the best.
Being those kids.
They're the most responsible kids, never get in trouble because they're too tired.
Too tired, yeah. They work their tail off. Uh, I don't, I don't know how it is, my stepdaughter goes to Belton, I don't know how at Temple, but oh, Belton, I mean, the kids are out there doing the mowing, doing the weed eating, cleaning up everything all around the barns, I mean, it's just nice to see. Not, they're not playing.
Right, yeah, yeah.
When you do a return.
I am the, I guess you would, I think it's survey construction coordinator.
Okay.
I do, I get with contractors, and I talk to them, I deal with them, I create all the stuff, the survey crews, the packages. I go through all the CAD for them and work with that, and just try to make it a smooth, doing construction specing.
Yeah.
So.
So are you a surveyor?
I was for about twenty-some odd years there.
Okay.
At turn.
Yeah.
I was out in the field, and then I had some health stuff that happened, and Victor was like, I don't want to lose you, so you come around the office, so that's what I did.
I can't even post in straight lines.
Some of, there's some servers that can either, so.
He has to answer phone calls for my people.
Yeah.
Okay. You have any questions for us?
No, I mean, I just, uh, and I'm, when I chose the parks on my, on the application.
Yeah.
I wasn't specifically just choosing parks, parks just seemed kind of interesting, just to learn more about how things work and the, and just, just how it, how it goes from here and then ends up to to finish point.
Yeah.
But I would be, I would be okay with any board, I mean, I just, I know that, I don't know how it works with the the pine core, and that's the one that you're, that's how to work.
So you would be open to.
I'd be open really with almost any kind of, I just, the parks just seem interesting. You know Chuck, I went to high school with Chuck.
Okay.
So I just, uh, he's a year or two older than me, but I just, it just seems inter- interesting.
Yeah.
So that's why I.
So I've, and I've told everybody this, but we had, we had a pretty tight um group this year. Kind of best way to say that, we have very few openings.
Right.
Normally, we have probably twice as many openings as we do. Have about the same number after, I have to hope, uh, we have sixteen or seventeen total boards. Seventeen, and so we interview for half in the fall like this, and then we interview for the other half in the spring.
Okay.
So if you're not, if you're not slated for this time around.
Right.
Is it okay to keep your app on fire?
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause, cause uh in the, in the spring, this is all, in the spring, um, we've got a whole new slate of openings.
Right, because I mean, I don't know what is the term length for that, I don't know how long, is that when their term is over and there's more, there's
Yeah.
More, there's more openings?
Well, so the the process each time is there's still, usually seven, nine people each board. And they serve either, they can serve either three two-year terms or two-three-year terms, so either way, everybody turns out. So what Jenna, the city secretary does is she, for those people, I I guess she called everybody to see if they're continue, if they're willing to continue to serve. For those people do continue to serve, or it's while somebody, you know, somebody leaves before their turn is up.
Right.
But then that's, in the ultimate, after six years, people are permanent, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what those openings will be.
Right.
Um, in the spring, but.
Okay.
Qualified guy, you've been here a long time, and uh we we always appreciate that, and I, I really like the thought of just someone uh a whole new set of eyes.
Right.
Right, and steps, was kind of churned through different boards.
Absolutely.
It really helps.
Right.
So, yeah, if we're not, and typically what we do is, after we're finished with the interviews, we make decisions pretty quickly.
Okay.
City secretary will call you.
Sure.
And let you know, um, but then again, if you're not, if if we don't slot you this time around, we. And let you know, um, but then again, if you're not, if, if we don't slot you this time around, we shut.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. So. And you know, we're, I mean, we're, obviously, we're residents, volunteers. Anybody who wants to step up and raise their hand and say, let, let me, then, yeah, thank you for that.
Right.
Unless you're first.
No, not first. Only when it comes to their season, that, that's when I get a little money.
Okay, very good. Well, if you don't have anything else for us, that's all we've got.
Well, I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
You bet.
See you later.
I follow up right here too.
Maybe I just don't see the, the time slots, the phone when they need.
That's all I'm, please.
Now, this, this one. With me here.
Oh, Lord. You know Kenny that, that filled out. Lot of it.
That was horrible.
It, it was right before graduation.
Right there on Highway thirty-six.
Fourteen fifteen.
Okay, I do it with the, yeah, wow. That would have been.
It was so tragic, and when I was looking at his beautiful eyes and Kimmy had some.
She was a big softball baby.
Yeah, and she was in Dalton watching, I think it was a district play, and just driving home, she got hit. Somebody, a drunk driver coming from where it's at, I think her honey gets one of those.
Yeah, got by the airport.
Yeah.
Very good.
It was tragic.
And she was super well alive.
Oh, very well, nice. And it was not a dry eye in the house on graduation day when her name is called, her mom. Walked across the stage and got through the phone, and we were all just sobbing, I couldn't believe the strength. For, for her to do that, and it was Amy's go back, I remember for Amy.
Yeah.
Um, she's, she's the, uh, transportation director. Yes, yes.
So Amy and our, first, um, Amy and our first cousins, Amy's mom and my dad are siblings, and I was at Amy and Will's wedding, I'm known Will.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and funny story, we had a, my dad's, um, sister's son was building a car with my way up. And we went to, uh, his funeral in Wilk, I'm not forgetting this, Wilk needed a funeral in, um, shorts. My dad, this is my dad's been gone for twenty years, my dad came outside, he said, son, you can show up to a funeral with nothing but short, Richard.
Every time I see him, I mean, we.
Well, that was a good guy.
Yeah.
Is Vic Kirk Charlie still involved?
He keeps saying he's got to retire, but. He's pretty involved. Being little, it's actually kind of running, like, business side of it, under. Um, Vic and Maxi, they're both still there.
Maxi still there.
Let's see, Mr. This, this service, we're doing good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. Surveying. And I guess, you talk to these people, we need stuff, you know, we tell them to pay, give it as hard as far as the score.
I'm a surveyor, just wanted to hear if you're happy.
Oh. How are you?
Come in, come in.
It's Coach Dave.
How do you do?
How you doing? Good to be here, I know you've been Carl, I don't know, I know who you are, how do you even do?
My, yes.
Oh, God.
Tim Davis. Pleasure to meet you.
He's one of the problems, he got his room.
He's small.
No, I've served on boards before, I understand, there's a curtain behind the curtain, you know, things that people don't know. You know, okay? And, you know, a lot of complaining, but. You, you'll do a good job, you know. I mean, I know you have to balance that, you know, today with tomorrow, and I do understand.
That's a great way to put that, actually, I've never thought of it that way.
I mean, to me, you're walking a tightrope.
Yeah, no.
Way now and in future.
Where you're going.
Stuff.
And you can't stay stuck.
I understand.
And.
You know, my generation, I'm older, so they tend to be stuck in their ways, but I've always been the one that can change. And too, because I coached all my life.
Yeah.
Dealt with kids and, you know, when I was young, they would give you salt tablets and tell you not to drink water, and that, you're interested in bullying and. Bullying and risk management and, uh, things that didn't exist ten years ago or six years, totally different.
Yeah. Football practice used to have to earn you.
Exactly.
Alright, well, thank you for being here today. I see that you were interested, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's just gonna be King Circle.
Mm-hmm, I live around the edge of your district.
Yeah, so.
On the north side, there's a bear crew, it's a house, the one on the northwest corner of A Street and King, big. Two-story on one end and one story on the end, I bought it from Mark Thornton when he was, he left, I was working for Parks and I bought the house from him when he left.
When you drive by the city bed, what does it look like now?
It looks like, uh, contractors are fixing it up.
Are they? I wouldn't have thought that, do you know?
A church.
Okay.
Understand, uh, there's, there's a church gonna be there, it'll be a good, it'll be a good thing for the church.
Sure.
You know, and the federation was always good there, they never bought, and they never bothered anybody.
Right, that's why.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, the creek kind of designed, kind of devised, even though the south side of the road belongs to District One, and it kind of divides the. Area people can't cross that creek except on A Street and on Main Street, so there's not a lot of.
Yeah, activity. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, um, but I see that you're interested in parks, mainly, willing to serve on any board?
Yeah, um, I'm willing to do it, I was a history major and read fifty books a year, so I could, I want to go over to.
So elaborate more.
Yeah, I could do anything, really, but.
So.
Put me in.
I'm not speed on you. Would you coach?
Well, I'm from Temple.
Okay.
Okay, I was born here, I'm a seventh generation Texan, like, Kirk and all there. And my ancestor was, uh, my mother's ancestor was Gabriel Jackson, that has a historical marker at Cook's Point. Uh, had a little, he came in eighteen thirty-three.
Okay.
And, uh, my mom's side of the family, they moved, I mean, my dad's side came in nineteen, well, they were just sharecroppers.
Okay.
Down in Rogers area, and, uh, I was born here, went to Scott, went to Travis, graduated Temple High.
When did you graduate?
Sixty-six, the new, first year in the new school, but I kind of consider myself old school. Married, uh, Janice Yan, she's the second cousin to John Yan.
Okay.
Um, she went to Temple High and I went to Temple High, she's a year younger than me. I actually didn't know where in high school, I knew her brother. And then I went to Temple College for two years, um, that was there in Vietnam, so I was getting ready to get drafted, so I married Jan. Ended up in the army right away, well, in, together, it was two months before I went in the army. So in the army, I served Vietnam, I was a combat medic, and, uh, I was wounded three times there and I'm pretty highly decorated. And I only mention that because that's why I stayed in the army, because I was pretty much a. Regular army material, because, you know, once you've had awards and things like that, it kind of helps you, motion, things like that, so I stayed in, I started having kids. When you're in the army, you start having kids, you just keep having kids, but I had four of them, so.
You're in trouble then.
Well, I don't know, everybody, I don't have a lot of kids.
That's right.
But they, uh, you know, I was stationed, uh, uh, when I came back, I was stationed in Kansas and, uh. I volunteered for anything to get out of Fort Riley, Kansas, and so they sent me to X-ray technician school, I was in San Antonio, my dad died. And he worked for the VA, but he died in nineteen seventy and, uh, the army reassigned me to Fort Hood. After I got out of school, it's a compassionate assignment, because my mom had already died, so I had to raise my sister, I have a sister who's nine years younger than my wife, my wife actually raised her.
Wow.
And, uh, I was at Fort Hood and then I went to Germany and, uh, served in Germany as an X-ray tech, but I really couldn't get promoted, so I went back to the. Medical side where, where it was when I was in Vietnam, and when I came back, I got to, went to Fort Hood, I worked at the, I was in the NCO at C, the in charge NCO. For the outpatient clinic, worked for Dr. Hennard, the father of the famous Hennard at the Louvies. Well, he was entitled.
Okay.
His daddy was rich, he was the west.
Okay.
Took care of him, he come in one time, won the car, his daddy bought him a Mercedes, I mean, he was just that kind of guy, and maybe that had something to do with it, but anyway. I got drafted into being a recruiter, I'm not a natural salesman, but, uh, they sent me, they, they had a recruiting scandal back in those days. So they just said, well, we'll just take guys that have a certain, uh, score on their test and we'll just, you're gonna be a recruiter whether you want to, and I drove up to where you at. And I already had ten years, and so no one got thrown out, so I became a recruiter, I found out that you got assigned by how you finish it, of course, so I worked hard. Where a lot of them were sulking, and so I got to go to Tucson, which is not, not Baltimore, not St. Louis. Philadelphia, Tucson was much better, lived on the airbase out there and I stayed out there for eight years, my family grew up Tucson pretty much. My wife wanted to go to, back to Europe, actually, she joined it there, so that was easy, so I just asked to go to Europe, they sent me. I had a few years left, and I worked, uh, I was with the armored, uh, division as a platoon sergeant, and I was the first sergeant. That was half male, half female, and, uh, the last year, I did a, I, the year before I got out, I ran the EFMB. Course, it's a course for medics to teach them, it's a high level course for medics to teach, to give them a badge to where that they, they're. Really qualified to be medics, it's like a combat medic, but without. And, uh, I ran that, the guy who ran it was my CO in Vietnam, he was a captain, but he was a colonel by then, he was a commander, so he said, if you run this course. Of course, the officer really ran the course, but that's not really what happens in the army, really the enlisted guy running, the officer playing off. Uh, he said, if you do that, I'll let you, I'll let you do anything you want to do, the last year you're in the army, so I said, oh, I wanna, I wanna. I wanna work for youth services and run, because I coached all my life during this whole time, played sports, and then he said, okay, and that's basically Ralph Wilson. Youth club, so I did that for a year, ran all the athletics and did everything there, and I got out of Fort Hood, came back here, I knew Clarence Martin.
Hmm, yeah.
That's the name, I knew Clarence, and Clarence said, ah, I'll get you a job, yeah, talked to John Samuels, but anyway. Um, so I went to work, really basically part-time for facilities initially, and then I went to park, you know, and then I went to parks and right, you know. Position for athletics, and, uh, and I ran Clarence Martin Gym, and I applied, I ran the special events, or, which included. I did some athletics, like Tracy was doing arts, and then I, I did some special events, I guess the big one I did was the senior games. Which kind of drove the city into the ground a little bit, because it was so hard to do, because there were, there were like eighteen venues, and so you had to do a track race, and.
Oh, wow.
And, and all this other stuff, they played all of those, horseshoe, anyway, but at the same time, I had been wounded in Vietnam several times, and I had a. Problem with one of them, I was gonna have to have a series of surgeries to fix it, and so that's where, that's why I left parks, really. I, I did the senior games the first year, the second year, I really wasn't proud, having issues with that, so I just left the city. And took care of my stuff, and I was, at the time, I was one of the guys that had found syntax soccer, so they hired me part-time to work. And then, uh, so I basically just invented my own job, and said, I, because, because I have, because I'm retired military. I have medical insurance, so they were able to let me run the club, pay me up. I had to face a, a sort of a decision, that I don't want to make a lot of money, that I don't want to do whatever I want to do, and I did what I really wanted to do. And, uh, for you, and, uh, so I didn't make a lot of money at it, but I ended up doing it for all the way to twenty twenty, and of course, I coached the whole time too. These are both two teams, but I ran it, so syntax took over Ralph Wilson's rec, Ralph Wilson gave it to us. Relender Brinley, and I should probably find those people gave it to us because we did such a good job as select, so, but when they did it that, they needed, they really needed a full-time person. So that's, I was a full-time paid employee, you know, uh, I just didn't have health insurance, I had everything else.
Yeah.
Low pay, and then, uh, in twenty twenty, of course, I'm getting old, but in twenty twenty, during the pandemic, it sort of really hurt all the. Organizations, because it, it just kind of caught them, like it would happen the first week of March, which was the week that we start spring soccer. And so the uniforms are recommenced, you do the eight hundred players, everything's done, and then we have to shut down, so the. Board of Directors of Syntax said, well, we can't hold the kids responsible, we'll let them play free to fall, but financially, it was a real. Mind, because we still had to play the state and association and all that, so basically, I furtive myself.
Yeah.
It was because they really, really couldn't afford paying and do that, so, and then I just sort of volunteered until last spring. I was still doing a lot of work with them, but I just, I just didn't go back to being a paid guy.
Okay.
And so, but this last season was my last season, uh, I had two teams still, I was doing two, two wreck teams, twelve-year-olds, teens. And, you know, I just couldn't do it anymore, back-to-back training sessions at night, I'm seventy-eight, so, uh, I was kind of worn out after three hours at night. Doing, so I said, I just can't do, do the training anymore, and the people that run syntax, they almost don't play with me. Do a case vote president like for me, and, and so I felt confident to still be able to do it, it's always been a well, well-run organization. You know, the people that founded it were really top people, like my brother, and, and, uh, uh, Donna Riley and Diana Rawl, some people that used to be really big. But, but that's where I'm at, I'm bored. Basically.
And still, are you?
No, I'm not, I'm not used to doing anything, so I remember working with American League, so, and so, I joined the friends of the library last month. So I could do something with friends of the library.
Can you talk to me about joining Sons of Republic of Texas?
Yeah, I, yeah, I definitely.
I know you're real.
So is my son, is all I want, is lazy, the other one.
That chapter, that chapter was about old.
Well, I saw something in the paper, I always read, I like to read the letters to the editor, it's like. Epithope, I, my wife thinks it's funny, because I always, when they, when they do the letters of the editor, Bible verses. I count how many Bible verses they're quoting. The record is nine.
I'm sending you an email, uh.
Y'all have a meeting, I saw.
Coming up on the corner.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would do it, I mean, I was history major, and I did, I did a couple of years at U of S. But, but it was worth it. But that has really nothing to do with it on the arts board, the arts board is just because of all the years that I was in sports.
Yeah.
And I grew up playing the parks, I used to play when I was young, I'm pretty young, the, I played, they didn't have flag football. We played what they called red rag football, and you actually had a rag with like one of those little mechanics racks, and then you put it, you put it in your back of your belt. But we played the Baker, Baker Fields over there, I guess it's the oldest, probably the oldest park in Temple Park.
Like Jackson Park.
Jackson, Jackson might be, I'm right there for a clue, but. Jackson, they had Jones Park was there, those things, there's lots of parks, or I know, I know you all got lots of future issues. When I was at parks, my, my, the one thing I was really forward that they'd never been able to afford to do is. They have better security at the park, the park place, uh, I spent a lot of time, so with soccer, I would be out like four nights and we'd practice until nine, nine-thirty. And then Saturday and Sunday, too, I'd be out there directing parks, the various things happening at the park.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
And it's really tough on the cops, you know, they could, they can pick their route through there, but there really needs to be a way to like shut the parks down. And lots of love for.
Well, you're the, our friend, you did.
Yeah, I know that, it's, it comes down to money, like we did.
It does.
But soccer-wise, I know everybody in the world, I can help bring some pervert here and stuff like that, but. I was Western District Vice President for state for, I was reading like three times in seven years, and I'm still on the board at Austin, at the case of. Association of Twenty-five Thousand, under our Vice President here.
Captain, is there anything else for, uh, Mr. Davis? You have any questions for us?
No, I mean, I mean, I, I know what you all do, and I, like I said, I've been on boards and I've been, the case of board is unique, because that, that association has such big money. We didn't have a million dollars, what we did is nineteen ninety-nine, we bought four, uh, four hundred or two hundred forty-two acres at Mayfair. And everybody said, what idiot would buy land at Mayfair, and we bought it for five hundred and ten thousand dollars, we're last, we sold it for thirteen and a half million dollars. And so they put that in a. Now, the account, I mean, we have a money managers as well, but the association may. But the association made three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in interest last year. So they, they could give grants like when we had our tornado here, it destroys all the goals, it crossroads, it belonged to us, to them now. They, they helped. They gave us fifty thousand dollars to buy it all.
Yeah.
So they have money. But I, you know, like I said, I, I would be a good resource for people because I know people.
Yeah.
I also know people that you don't know. Because of soccer, I know the working class. Hispanics, a lot of Hispanics, a lot of people just work. And then kids played. And, and so I just kind of know people. I don't know. I know, uh, I think I could probably be a good resource, you know, for parks.
Yeah.
If not, I could, I could be just about anything to work because I'm board.
Your likes is still.
Yeah, I know. And you know, we don't, I, I'm kind of a private person, but I, you know, I know Mike Brockway, Dougson, uh, Ken Smith over there. Greg Douglas used to be on our board. Doug did. And who else do I know? Jeff Ling does some stuff with the city. I host his kids. Bonnie Clark, Don Farwell.
All those guys.
Jack Jones, getting used to late morning. So I know lots of people, but I kind of keep a low profile. I stay out of trouble. I don't be like you. They know who I am.
All right, very good. We appreciate you. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Like I said, I'm a military guy, so I'll always be on time.
Thank you.
And I understand all of it. But I love the fact that he knows simple way. But he's been other places. And can bring some other ideas.
I like anyone to stay busy. I hope, I hope.
I wouldn't guess that. You gotta look.
I was down there a last one.
Are we really?
We're early.
Susan, Leva, Joey. Well.
I was gonna try to kick you. Yeah.
Hey.
Nice to meet you.
Hey, Tim Davis.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. I'm Carl Kirkland.
Roland. Roland, pardon me.
Yeah.
Roland, I don't know you. Where are you from?
Excuse me, what? I'm in the ball there.
Uh, fine. Where do you work now? What do you do?
Just retired from the military in April of this year. So I currently I work at Vista Church.
Okay.
And associate teach.
Vista, the topic.
Oh, super fast.
How many service do you have on Sunday?
Three. And then they're all good. Like now, we set like number four area in Nashville. Yeah, they're in the process of like designing another extension. Which is good because the extension for the last one, the roof needs. Yeah.
We have one of those going on. Roof needs to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we've got you down as living in district four, hillside drive.
Yes, sir.
And then you're interested in planning and zoning in parks. Um, or you want to share about anything?
Yeah.
What's your, what's your interest in, in just in general in serving city?
So I, uh, once I retired, I decided that I kind of just wanted to be more involved in the community than I'm at. Like, we're here. We're not going anywhere for decades. We got three small children and they've, they've been here. Like I, my last. Eight years of my military career, my family stayed right here. Um, and then I just traveled around and came back to tell.
Is that how y'all, is that how your family did that here with the?
Military. Yep, in the beginning, yes, sir. Way back to two thousand and seven.
Okay.
Sir.
Y'all are good.
Uh, I have twin boys that are nine and my daughter's twelve.
To see now, I have twin boys that are twenty-six and you can survive this.
I hear that all the time.
Living there.
I got twenty-eight. Yeah, one of them broke both his arms the day before school started. Yeah. They're always a story.
And they came up with these.
Yeah, it's funny. Like one, yeah, it starts coming. One of them gets in trouble and they're like, lay off. Proud of you.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can lunch you guys together, buddy.
Yeah.
That's great. What else? What else do we need now?
So, um, well, my la, my military experience, especially the very end, I, I, I retired as a first sergeant. I declined sergeant major because I was in another country. I'm getting home for three months, maybe for ten more months, and then hopefully being back here again. Probably so.
How, how are you?
I was in the army for twenty-four years.
Okay.
And, um, but the primary duties I had as a first sergeant for the last four years for two different units. With the last unit, I did a whole lot of planning and logistics, um, abroad and here. I did a lot of movements. I dealt with a lot of money, finances. So I learned it's been pretty transferable. Today I work with a lot of civilian departments, department of state. So, and then I'm obviously my organizational skills with equipment and time and dealing with people in the public and then adding on to being with the church and the school system. And it's team, team, though, though relationships. I figured I should probably have some skills to use, um, for my own city. I want to be more invested in work. I could call.
It's like a hard transition to make. If you're not from, you know, have you really, you know, born and raised, et cetera, lots of things to come from a new city. Then you're kind of coming and going with your, then you come back and say, all right, I want to get involved with the strength.
Right, exactly. It does get a little intimidating. Fortunately, I was adopted when I was younger, so I never really had a permanent home.
Okay.
And then I joined the military. So then I kind of got used to being a nomad. But my kids have never known that.
Right.
So. Other than when they were born in Hawaii, they never lived anywhere else.
Yeah. We do some subjects you teach in Nelson?
I do, sir. Primarily at Northville Middle School and Lakeville High School. I like being at the high school the most. Um, because I seem to be very relatable to eleven and twelve graders.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially like the twelfth graders when they're getting ready to transition out that second semester. Man. Last year was my first experience or last spring as I was transitioning out of the military as I started. I, I probably spent more of my teen time loading classrooms with live questions.
But I'm sure that was really valuable.
Oh, yeah. Especially the ones that wanted to join the military.
Yeah.
Yeah. And giving them like the real rundown. Like, because I, I cannot, I wouldn't change a thing. Like, I came in with nothing and I left with so much, right? But, um, I came in very like. I didn't, I didn't even know what my job was. I was in Forts Hill, Oklahoma. I thought I was an infantry. That's what artillery trains. Two weeks before we were starting.
They told people should do a tick every night.
Yeah. They, no, what it was is recruiter told me I could be a ranger. And so I didn't pay any attention to what I, I was prior to this, right? I didn't want to be a ranger. But so then I remember asking my counselor, what's, what's a thirteen Bravo? He said, what do you think you are? I was like an infantryman. And he just looked at another kid like, he got two weeks to teach you. Coldly shot. So to prevent that from happening, anybody else turned on the light, I turned it off. I ended up reclassing the military police. It's been a long time there. But, um, the, uh, and then being able to tell them how to talk, how to enter, if they're as bad score. I did not listen to the recruiters that are coming to the school.
Yeah.
On everything. And most of them, at least at Lakeville, a lot of that community is saturated with military camp.
Right.
Yeah. At least they got like a source on. And apparently I still have a rate somewhere. Even though I started growing my hair to the uncomfortable point now. I had your haircut for like fifteen years.
I had your haircut.
I bet your kids live back on their pictures.
Oh, yeah. The fire stick brings them up all the time, right? I'm still learning. Could see how much longer I'm tolerated. I almost had a haircut last Friday.
What, what's your role as this?
Uh, I'm the safety is the official role. So I'm, I coordinate security for church events, um. Anything that requires a lot of daycare. If we have daycare, then we are gonna have one of the volunteers that I'm in charge of. A deputy police officer or Texas dollars, the security contractor I went with, um, there at the event. I'm, uh, there on Sundays. Well, overall, I'd be, that'd become my purchase fee, responsible for dinner, definitely. I'm on my back, my background. Um, but then I support the host team and like dealing with the public.
We appreciate y'all's help with Austin.
Oh, yeah.
They will try. Service. Yeah.
I'm glad.
That was big, right?
Yeah, it's huge.
Well, but even sort of the, the, the quiet work that you guys do, it's true substantial.
Yeah.
I could see how something like that could be a target.
Yeah, yeah. And so then doing vulnerability assessments. Office of the governor trying to, so I'm trying to make it so I, I'm still a little bit too much changed on my terms. So we would call it a VBA, an issue central board pool asset, right? So where I'm trying to make that, the Vista Church is one of my visions. I have some new pastors like. Uh, for the west side of our town. Like if there's another natural disaster, like the tornado or another winter storm. We try to make changes to the church to where it becomes like a center for help. And then be working closely with law enforcement. That way they are, incident response. I think we already have somewhat coordinated ultimate incident response place. Um, locations have been needed with the disaster. I know it's a warming shelter.
Yeah.
And then, you know, every year this FEMA offers a grant unless it gets canceled after this year. And I talked to the office of the governor back in. March, when they first hired me. They, I still reference the email every day. He gave me a lot of good materials, but then one way is to get, uh, FEMA funds for whenever they do the next build. So that it just further enhances the ability.
Yeah, except for the meeting about that.
Yeah. It's also really tricky with the word.
Well, we, um, since to maybe spread our base with interview, we have a lot of people that are interviewed.
I didn't expect the call.
Okay. Well, I'm, um, that would be called. That's good. If, if, um, I don't, we, we will make a decision if we're, we're gonna slot people shortly. But if you're not slotted this time, maybe try to keep your application. I think your skill set is, uh, it's wide, but it's all pretty unique. And it's, I don't know that we've had anybody else, um, which is still set interview. And I can see some places where you. And I, I don't think they're up this time. I think CPAC, yes, it is. So what we do is we have seventeen boards. We're gonna be for at in the spring and at fall.
Yeah, absolutely. Keep me. Yeah. Like I said, my, my number one objective is to become like a pillar of my community. So.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years from now, my grandkids will be like, oh, yeah, my desk.
Right. And there's some merit to that.
For sure. Absolutely. So we appreciate it. Awesome. Absolutely. Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a pleasure meeting all of you.
We bet. It's our pleasure.
You take care.
You guys, good luck the rest of your.
It's Roland, not wrong.
Yes, but I will answer whatever. So math originally correct. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah.
This time is difficult.
I didn't see. I think, I think that if this is this time, if you're super passionate, you're crazy. You don't put them on there.
Yeah.
We've done that before.
With.
I want to think that the fire from the.
A voluntary decision.
Yeah. We will pay you. I know you don't make any money, go for you. Yeah, so.
Man, that was a good group of people. Very good. And you.
That one went well, right?
Yeah.
Well, you know what? We almost didn't. I mean, we almost.
I accidentally made it in.
Yeah. I mean, so I'm, I'm sitting here wondering, who did I miss?
Right. Because we almost missed that. You know, I, I understand. And we may have, but I like the group you brought us.
I think so. I think it's good, a good statement. Um.
So library, park.
I mean, even this, I mean, how do you not put too many on? But then have you not just still know?
We need to do normal.
Yeah.
So it's what's the one, the one you tell us what. Let it here for you.
I do this every time and he's like, who's doing this?
And I want to hear from you.
Well, I did. Cause you're like.
I take notes the whole time and I hear keywords. And so I know that, hey, they really want this and they ask this question and this person says.
A lot of blah, blah, blah.
It all hinges on Joey Aggie. If you take him off of parks, put him on playing his own.
But that, that can park.
You know, if you all, there's two, there would be two making these parks. Do you think, yeah, but if you could put neither. She would fill Joey's entire term, which would give her two, just her interest in parks. You know.
All right. So let's, let's start.
Where's our list of? So, is there a road?
You need a key bar.
Yeah.
So as we sit today.
Yeah, I've got one right here.
D and Z. With that mill pay. Here, let's just, let's just start on the very first one. CPAC.
So there is a big scene on CPAC. So what about Roland?
Roland. So who did we, who else did we interview for that? And who else was in?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This may be the one that has.
Even hopper. Okay, so.
So for, uh, probably applications are good for two years. So I keep them on file. So we can just get in and sweep it and spread them across. So if anybody that does it gets selected this time, plus I call them.
Yeah.
Anybody that's elected and we keep application files, so they will call the.
So Roland Davis. For CPAC or? So that, that was Roland. Oh.
Corin. Wait, you said Roland Davis, Roland Corin. He's running that wrong.
And I knew Roland Davis. That's a lot. Okay.
He's just not saying it.
I think. My cousin's married to Tim Davis. I get them. Facebook stream.
He plays birthday. We are, uh, we're West Texas boys. Okay, so, so, Row, I know where you're going there. What's your name? But, um, Susan.
Library.
Library. Parks and Rec. We put. Joey.
No.
We have Joey leaves.
Joey leaves.
Joey leaves.
And, um, neither. Uh, Dennis is from them.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, if we do that, we've got to make, because one of them is fire term, right?
Yeah.
So one of them's short.
But they get to, I'll just come right back. Then I start to turn that's the counties. I know Doug was interested in, um, D and Z. Oh, it would be nice next time we was wanting to get pieces. We actually kept Doug's application on file from the last time because he wanted on parks.
Okay. Doug seems to, I mean, I, I think he'd be very happy because he seems to want parks.
Yeah, he's someone that we definitely do.
And I, I was on parks when he was chair at one point and he, he did push, he was there with Kinsack Cora and then to. Uh, the transition there with Kevin and he did kind of push, then do so things that was just. And, and so does Joey, by the way.
Yeah, Joey, Joey's impressive, and he's been around enough to get it.
So moving Joey for peace. Where's P and Z? No, I'm over here talking, Dan is over here talking.
Now.
Careful, hey, somebody just has some input here, otherwise.
P and Z, we have one opening on time.
Yes.
One opening on P and Z.
Yeah. How about moving Joey A G?
Yeah.
From Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
To P and Z.
Yeah.
There's two spots on P and Z.
Oh, Parks.
I'm sorry. I'm still hung up, the other day you called me about, uh, BJ Lowell, P and Z.
Uh, no, it's T E D C.
P E D C, I'm, I'm sorry, he's on.
BJ would do P D C, but he's, he's.
He would, he would have to recuse himself more than I do.
Yeah, yes, okay.
Joey A G, P and Z.
And all of that's good.
She has, thank you, and I congested. I pour my heart and soul into this. Twice a year.
I'm in control here.
What about V D A? So, um, the two Z B A vacancies are alternate positions. And we had two in that witness from Z B A, and that's Matt, Maple Lee, and Scott Baker. And so, me and I discussed it.
Yeah. Just a point, just a point.
And maybe that's two.
Magics is good.
And I don't know Matt, I mean, I don't know, uh, Scott, but that's, that's really great there.
And what's that, that's good?
Dave Lee, Nagle?
Dave, Matt Nagle, yes. Looks like Nagle with his name. And he's very involved, he's been president of Salvation Army. What is Scott, he's, Scott Baker's not a master electrician plumber, is he?
No, that was the one.
Oh, it doesn't have to be.
Under construction, but, um, we, we've never been able to.
Yeah, we can't get that.
We got our, uh, paper.
They're at work.
And then Matt, Maple Lee, and I think it's.
The, uh, the migration entity. Looks like Nagle. A G E L E.
N A E G E L E.
G E L E.
There's two extra E's in there now. Billy, D E, N A.
Maple Lee.
G D L E.
Oh, wait. N A E G E L E, yes. Okay.
M A E.
Three.
They've got a whole bunch of these in reach.
I'm trying to buy them.
Yeah, right. Okay, asking the story about. So let's, let's look at the. So Susan. Library. And Eva, library, no, we, Eva, Eva Parks.
Stewart, which I.
Um, but Stewart, Roland, Ronald.
But I, still appear to be a little. Yeah, I, I wrote, you talk about notes, I wrote, you know, did he have an axe to your hand? Because he said something about.
I think he does sometimes.
Oh. He, yeah, he said something about distribution warehouse near South eighteen, or something, uh.
Okay, yeah, I was starting to think, uh, first fire.
That was Houston.
Okay, so that was Houston.
Yes, because Houston, you know, has a large city.
Yeah, yes, that was over there.
And so, I remember last time, and he's very educated, just himself, his experience, he's been very interested in study, planning, so.
Okay, so we'll settle for something for him next time. He is an alternate on Z B A, so that's right. And then Doug is on Park. Will was, uh, hopefully have him for the next round.
Will's, yeah.
Yeah. Um, um, Chris David. And Steve, getting next round, or?
Yeah, I would consider, I liked him. I, I maybe don't want, but I liked him.
For sure.
I liked him.
Um, on, in, we've got two final terms. Running up there with Susan on Parks, which to me seems like what he would be interested in.
Yeah.
So, and, and there, Parks actually, we interviewed for them in March. Yeah, and it's actually.
Kind of what you're saying is Parks next time for him, possibly.
Yeah, I, I think he could be an S.
I think he could do.
And you know, his point of knowing everybody. That helps.
That helps a lot, yes.
We had nobody this year off ESAB. In March. You gonna say D is now, or?
No, no, I'm just looking at what's coming up.
So, airport.
How's y'all getting mail on there? Now, really, just she was, there was an open spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, she initially showed, um, some interest in getting involved.
I just, I think I said it before, that particular board, if you don't know construction, you're sitting there, you might as well be like me sitting in a surgeon's, even.
Yeah.
The rest of the shop, Tanner's a little bit that way, and is around the industry.
So let's, can we, can we take just a minute to look at, um, uh, let's look, spring. Maybe what's coming up? I'm reading these, right, building and standards. What could happen? So over there where it says in the point per term column, the so a point per term, April fir-, I'm looking at Jack Martin. Jack Martin, April first, twenty twenty-four, to March thirty.
It's Jack on six.
What is the point?
That's when his appointment became, he was appointed on April first, and it's for a two-year period, ended March.
Oh, okay, alright. I'm, I'm looking at these people as much.
So in that column, it says eligible for reappointment, it'll tell you that they're eligible, and so I'll ask them again, do you want to serve? They say yes or no.
Right.
I'll get vacated or keep them on, and then if it says final term, it means.
Yeah, and that's even good for the spring.
So, and it looks like Brad Phillips would be the only one in March of twenty twenty-sixth who will go off. Of the ones in standards.
They don't have to, right?
Never, because alternate is an alternate, and alternate don't, they do not have term limits because they've never.
Yeah.
Until they get brought up to an official.
So, so I see the building and standards, nothing, unless somebody quits. And CPAC does have.
E S A B.
But E S A B, Tommy Valley's turning off.
Yes.
BJ.
Yes.
And John. And now Will. Whether especially with BJ and Joey, Dom, Will would be excellent. Very talented.
Alright. And then, so historic preservation will have four.
And keep in mind, I have a lot of applications that y'all haven't seen, who weren't only interested in historic or emergency services or something that are given by the agency, so I have a lot of.
Just said, y'all, this time, because they weren't acting the ones.
Yeah, Steve, so, uh, memory revitalization will have three. B A. Okay, so we'll have, looks like a couple of boards will have two or three each.
Yeah.
And then, but there's nothing else for the rest.
I'll do one, try to make sure and remember Will off, Will off.
I'll.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's exactly right, is that one. And we're losing BJ there, so.
Yeah.
Just to, I did get a, a email, I emailed, um, all three watershed, because we have never visited, um, our Z for a while, you know? And, um, they have someone in mind that they want to, he cheated, tell me who, she said he just appointed to the board, and they want to have him serve a little bit on the board before they recognize his appointment to our season.
Okay. Okay, and so we're, we're clear on today's work. Um, and everybody who's fine with wanting BJ if he is.
Great.
He, um, good because the calling is. And, um, and he was, he was genuinely excited. So, he was like, I'll come off one of these others.
Not necessary. Slow down.
Maybe he was wanting to.
I hate losing BJ, BJ is doing, he's the chair of the subcommittee on the S A B, doing excellent.
Okay, good.
And Joey's doing really good. Joey kind of sits beside you in there.
Yeah. I didn't realize they had a subcommittee, that's great.
They have to, because we have people on the regular committee that don't know what I'm talking about. They do. Alright, that's, that's very, very how it is.
Right. Okay. Alright, what else? Is that it? Let's start, biggest one. All good. Mr. Kirkland, though. Cracking the whip. Yeah. We are adjourned.